Eight o'clock, Monday, March 24, 2014. I hereby call the City Council.
Hats off to the order.
Please stand up, root the flag, hats removed, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, uh, please be seated, councilors. Before we start the agenda item, I'd like to take a moment of silence. City of Brockton lost Harold Crivens. Harold was a great guy and he was retired Brockton Fire Department personnel. If you could take a moment of silence from Mr. Crivens and his family. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Councilors, again, before we start Agenda Item Number One, we have a couple guests joining us here today. We have the Brockton Basketball Club, a group of great youths here in the city of Brockton that are doing wonders, coached by Jacob Taggart and Sterling Marshall. And they're in a playoff right now. They keep winning and winning and winning. They're champions within the city of champions. If the coaches are here, if you could please come forward, I'd appreciate it. I know the council would appreciate it as well. Counselors, I invited these young men here tonight because, again, they're exemplifying the good things in the city of Brockton and I want to welcome them. This is your chamber. We only use it on Monday nights. Coaches, thank you for being here. If you could say a few words, Coach Taggart.
First and foremost, I'd like to also recognize Coach Adam Portrait, who's with us with the sixth grade team. What I do want to say first and foremost is thank you, to you for inviting us here. You know, we go through day and day as grownups and a lot of times we forget about the kids and the good things they do. And we read the paper and we hear about bad things and we hear about negative things. But we do have young men in the city. These young men, and there's a lot more, these aren't the only ones, but there's a lot more young people in our city that do a lot of positive things. We've had a couple of tournaments. These young men have behaved like gentlemen. They've made our city, myself, their families, also their families are here, their families are absolutely incredible.
They deserve...
We even won a game last week. I got nervous. The stands were so loud. It was probably with a group of 15 parents and it was, it was no joke, Brockton, Brock, it was great. I do also want to mention something that one of our young men did when we was in a hotel last week down the Cape. His name's Ty Sean. I would like for him to come forward. Something this young man did while we were in a hotel, I think it was the Bayside Resort down the Cape, and there were teams from other towns, other states, and they were running around the hotel, you know, being kids, normal kids. And our team started, they wanted to get a little rambunctious, and this young man pulled his team together and said, "Listen, you guys, we gotta be on our best behavior. We're representing our city and our family." And it was just a, it was a very proud moment for me, just as a Brocktonian, to see a young person who's, you know, this is our future. We're all getting old here, you know? These are gonna be the people that keep our legacy going. And I was very proud of this young man for doing that, and he did it on his own, so I want to make sure I give him a... Then one other thing, I gotta bring Jaheem up here, 'cause he has a question for the City Council President, so...
Oh, here we go.
I have this trophy, but I have one request. Can you take a selfie with us?
I couldn't hear it.
You said a selfie.
A selfie?
A selfie. Excuse me, sir. It's when you take a...
I know what a selfie is.
You know what a selfie is?
Good old man, but I know what it is.
Well, technically, it's gonna be more than one of us, so it's a groupie. That's what the kids...
Groupie, yeah.
It's a selfie or a groupie. Yeah, they wanna... Actually, what actually like all the city councilors do, I don't know if anybody's ever taken a groupie or a selfie in City Hall.
Yeah, you know what we'll do? We're gonna take a two-minute recess.
Okay.
First of all, I wanted to say you guys dressed impeccably tonight, and you bring great honor and pride, not just to your family and to those here tonight, but to the city of Brockton. You're all winners. You've had a great season. I know you keep going. I want to thank you guys. I want to thank the coaches. We'll do that groupie selfie in about two seconds. But thank you again for being here. Thank you. I'm gonna call a two-minute recess. Council Dubois.
Thank you, City Council President. I would like to have Arianna Jones come to the podium, please. I have the distinct honor this evening of presenting a citation to Ms. Arianna Jones on behalf of the City Council, and it says, "The City of Brockton official citation. Be it known that the Brockton City Council hereby extends its congratulations to Arianna Jones for winning first place in the school, city, and district competitions in National History Day's senior individual exhibit in recognition of her report on World War II rights and responsibilities of women at war and on the home front. And be it known further that the City Council extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the City Council." So Arianna has won not just one, not just two, but three...
Yes.
...competitions so far, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about it in the one that's coming up next.
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying, when I went to my school competition, I moved on to compete against other schools in the South Shore District. And on that day, I spent a lot of time around other schools who considered Brockton lower than them, and they felt that they were higher above us, and that made me proud to say that I came in first place for the South Shore District, and I can now represent Brockton while I compete against the other districts in Massachusetts to prove that we're not below everyone else that surrounds us.
So Arianna, I'm gonna come down and I'm gonna give you the citation, but just before I do, I just want to congratulate you one more time for your academic success, and also just put a plug in for your mom and dad, Tina and Dwayne, who have been wonderful parents to you, and I'm sure it rolls into your ability to excel in school.
Yes, very much.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Arianna.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Make a motion to take items one through 12 collectively.
Second. Motion's been made, properly seconded, to take Agenda Items Number One through 12 collectively. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. That matter is accepted. One through 12, Mr. Clerk, please.
Gary Keith of Brockton Planning Board, five-year term, ending March 2019. Ali Spears, Brockton Planning Board, five-year term, ending March 2019. Ross Messina, Brockton Planning Board, term ending March 2019.
Counselors, ladies and gentlemen, the clerk is reading, please. Thank you.
Craig Pena, Brockton Conservation Commission, term ending March 2017. Brandy Hassan, Brockton Water Commission, term ending 2017. Stephen Hope, Emergency Management Director, City of Brockton. Lisa Shea, Brockton Cable Advisory Board, term ending March 2017. Manu Santiel, Brockton Community Cable, ending March 2017. Martin Schlefer, Commission for Three-Year Term under Brockton Traffic Commission, 2017. Ireland of Ontario, Constable, City of Brockton, term of three years. And Paulan East is a Constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years.
Counselors, this collectively is one, two, three, five through 12. Number four is not included in this collective. One through three, five through 12, hereby all referred to Finance. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Number four, please.
Caleb Bunsen, 191 Prospect Street, to the Brockton Conservation Commission for three-year term, ending March 2017.
That is also referred to Finance, councilors.
Reappointment of Kenneth Galligan, Brockton, to the Brockton Traffic Commission for three-year term, ending March 2017.
Referred to Finance.
Reappointment of William Thomas Jr., Brockton, as a Constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years.
That too is referred to Finance.
Reappointment of David Lynch, Brockton, as a Constable of the City of Brockton, term of three years.
Referred to Finance, councilors.
Reappointment of O.C. Jordan, the Brockton Water Commission, for three-year term, ending March 2017.
Referred to Finance Committee.
Reappointment of Robert J. Harrington, Brockton, as a member of the Board of Assessors, for a three-year term, ending March 2017.
That also referred to Finance.
Reappointment of Kendall Grace, Constable of the City of Brockton, term of three years.
Referred to Finance, councilors.
Mr. President.
Counselor Stedenski.
If I might, I'd like to move that we remove from the table the petition of National Grid and Verizon for one pole down on Officer Sajin's way. It was tabled because of a missed number that was sent in, and it's been corrected, and the clerk will read it.
Motion made by Counsel Stedenski, seconded and made. I'm taking it off the table. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, that is taken off the table. Thank you, counselor.
The petition is filed was by National Grid and Verizon England, proposing to install what they said was a 45, a scrip des error, not 45 poles, but in fact a 45-foot pole. That has been corrected. So it's a 45-foot, class-two joint, own pole from existing pole in Oak Hill Way, approximately 20 feet plus or minus. In Council, February 24, 2014, Counsel Stedenski motion to table the matter. Counseline Airey, second. The motion, motion carries.
Time hasn't arrived to clear the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor of this matter? If so, please come forward and state your name to the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Jose Vasquez. I'm on behalf of National Grid, representing to petition this poll. The reason for this poll is we're gonna serve solar farm, so it's to extend primary to the customer's property.
Thank you, sir.
If I might, Mr. President.
Counselor.
The energy that you're gonna be bringing through that pole, where's it come from?
It is coming from the existing three-phase line on the street, and we're gonna tap off and go, and it's gonna feed a three-phase solar farm.
And where's it coming from?
It's coming from...
Solar farm?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this matter? If so, please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Is there anyone here in opposition of this matter? If so, please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Matter's gonna come before us at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. We'll vote on it tonight at the end. Thank you. Number 20, number 19, please.
Reinstill petition of Community Cabbage DBA Collins Taxi, located at 383 Warren Avenue, Brockton, for eight taxi licenses, in Council, March 24, 2014.
That's referred to Public Safety, councilors.
Petition of Lubris Auto Body and Repair for Motor Vehicle Repair, McCannal Blue Body License, located at 64 Elliott Street, in Clerk's Office, January 28, 2014. Hearing is signed for March 24, 2014.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I would like to make a motion to move this to the end of the agenda.
Second. Motion's been made, properly seconded, to take number 20 at the end of the evening tonight, number, the last one on the agenda. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. All opposed, that matter carries. We're gonna put that at the end of the agenda tonight, Mr. Clerk.
Petition of Manly Street Holdings LLC for a garage license at 97 Manly Street, in City Clerk's Office, February 4, 2014. Hearing is signed for March 24, 2014, at 8:00 p.m.
Time hasn't arrived. I'm gonna declare the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, please come forward and state your name for the clerk. Anyone here tonight in the chamber relative to this matter?
Through the, through the chair. The attorney for that petition called unable to make it, but this is a transfer of garage license. It goes with the property, so it's automatic, in fact.
Counselors, you have any questions for the clerk? He just clarified why there's no one here tonight. Any issue with that? Counseline Airey.
Well, I do, because it's located in Ward III and it is in my area, so I have some questions. If anything, then we can table it and move it to the next City Council meeting.
Want to table it or continue it, counsel?
Continue it to the next meeting.
Second. In the form of a motion, it's been properly seconded, continue this to the next FinCom meeting. All in favor of continuance? All opposed, that motion is passed. It's gonna be hereby continued to the first FinCom in April. Thank you, counselor.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting on March 17, 2014.
That's accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Audit Committee for its meeting on March 18, 2014.
That also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Director of Personnel Verifying that based on the current personnel employed benefits, unemployment compensation appropriation has a surplus of $12,000.
Counselors, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor submitting a resignation letter from Fred Fontaine from the License Commission, effective March 17, 2014.
Counselor, that is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor submitting a resignation letter from Paul B. Marion from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor submitting a resignation letter from Nathan O'Dagro from Brockton Cultural.
That's accepted and placed on file.
From the Mayor submitting a resignation letter from Kelly Alwood Ford from the Conservation Commission.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the Mayor submitting a resignation letter from Scott D. Ford from the Planning Board.
Counselors, that also is accepted and placed on file.
An audit submitting Article 19 of the revised audences, the City of Brockton, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton as follows, Chapter 119, Police Department, in Council, January 27, 2014. Referring to the Standing Committee on Audience, that report was favorable as amended with a substitute audit.
Mr. President. Counsel Monahan.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to Finance.
Second. Motion's been made, properly seconded, to send this back to the Finance Committee. If you're in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Please raise your hand just so we get a vote. If you're opposed, please raise your hand. That's gonna carry. Goes back to the Finance Committee meeting. Counsel, you want that the first FinCom, first of the month?
First FinCom, yes.
Yes, it's back to the first. If we could tell the clerk, you did, Counsel Monahan, you want that the first FinCom in April.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Appointment of Marlene Emery of Heverd Ave, Brockton, Council-in-Age, in three-year term, ending March 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance. Our report is favorable.
Counselors, questions on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennemney affirmative.
Counselors, the matter, the appointment is hereby confirmed.
Appointment of Christopher Coska to Almontello, Brockton, Historical Commission, for three-year term, ending March 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, the question is on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennemney affirmative.
Counselors, the appointment is hereby confirmed.
Appointment of Mary Beth O'Brien to the Brockton Historic District Commission, three-year term, ending March 2017. In Council, March 10, refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, the question is on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennemney affirmative.
Counselors, the matter, the appointment is hereby confirmed.
Appointment of Christopher Coska to Almontello, Brockton, Historical Commission, for three-year term, ending March 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, the question is on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennemney affirmative.
Counselors, the appointment is hereby confirmed.
Appointment of Mary Beth O'Brien to the Brockton Historic District Commission, three-year term, ending March 2017. In Council, March 10, refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, the question is on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennemney affirmative.
Appointment is hereby confirmed.
Appointment of David Zaff to the Brockton Conservation Commission, three-year term, ending March 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennemney affirmative.
Appointment is hereby confirmed, councilors.
Appointment of Paul Marion to the Brockton License Commission as an alternate for a three-year term, ending March 2017. In Council, March 10, refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, this appointment question also is on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Counselors, appointment is hereby confirmed.
Reappointment of Lorraine Lally to the Brockton Council-in-Age, for three-year term, ending March 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, questions on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Reappointment is hereby confirmed, councilors.
Reappointment of Irene Clay to the Brockton Council-in-Age, for three-year term, ending March 2017. In Council, March 10, refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, questions on confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Reappointment is hereby adopted, councilors.
Transfer of $8,850 from Traffic Commission Ordinary Maintenance, Public Safety, to Traffic Commission Personal Services overtime, in order to correct and continue making payments previously paid out of the incorrect Ordinary Maintenance Line item of Public Safety to public property employees doing work for the Traffic Commission. In Council, March 10, 2014, refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, transfer question is on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Airey.
Yes.
10, 2014. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, transfer question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
DeBois.
Yes.
Mearney.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennui affirmative.
Transfers hereby adopted, Counselors.
An appropriation of funds up to $750,000, in excess of amounts already appropriated, and in addition to the amount of $1 million previously authorized under Mass General Laws 4331D by City Council for deficit spending in February 2014 for the DPW Highway Snow Removal for the purpose of fiscal 2014 snow removal in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 31D of the Mass General Laws. In Council, March 10, 2014. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Counselors, appropriation question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Mearney.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ennui affirmative.
Appropriation is hereby adopted, Counselors.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout of Eastfield Drive.
That's referred to Finance.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout of Fairbanks Road.
Counselors, that too is referred to Finance Committee.
We have a transfer of $11,864 from Personnel Department Employee Benefits Unemployment to Mayor's Department Personal Services, in order to pay for separation costs paid to Mayor Belzoni staff.
Counselors, that's referred to Finance Committee.
We have a resolve that the real estate custodian, Attorney Benjamin Albanese, Patriotsway Mansfield, be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the position of real estate custodian and his plan of how he will undertake to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of this position.
That is referred to Finance Committee, Counselors.
We have a resolve that the mayor, the treasurer collector, and the acting auditor be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the position of real estate custodian and to provide financial, administrative, and historical information about the position of real estate custodian.
That too is referred to Finance. Number 20 comes back before us, Counselor.
Is the, is the hearing opened, or?
I'm going to do it right now, Counselor.
Thank you so much.
Time hasn't arrived to declare the hearing open. If there's anyone here, this is again, the petition relative to 64 Elliott Street. Hearing is now open. If there's anyone here in favor of that, please come forward. Come forward, right to the podium, please, sir. Just state your name for the clerk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you just come and speak into the mic? That'd be great.
Okay.
Your name?
Louis Vicente.
Your name, sir?
Emmanuel Vicente.
Address?
Home.
18 Farrington Street.
Thank you, gentlemen. Counselors.
Mr. President.
Yes.
At this time, do I do the stipulations or after the hearing?
Do it after, Counselor.
Then I, that's, then, thank you for being here, gentlemen. I'm sorry that we were not able to meet before this meeting, like typically occurs. So I appreciate the council's indulgence, so we could talk about hours of operation. Historically, we've had some problems with this address, with cars being parked outside, and an address that had previously been a commercial location, there have been houses that built, have been built all around it. So it's really a commercial use embedded in a residential neighborhood, which in, in my, my estimation, I hope someday will, will cease its use as an auto body. But I understand that you are here to talk about getting this garage license, and I think that the parameters that we discussed are going to at least help a little bit. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else here in favor? If so, please come, come to the podium, state your name for the clerk. Anyone here in favor? Seeing none, I'm going to call that part of the hearing closed. Anyone here in opposition relative to this matter? If so, please come forward, state your name to the clerk. Seeing none, that's closed. We're going to bring it back to you, Counselor.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to add the following stipulations onto this license. Stipulation 1, the hours of operation will be Monday to Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No work on Sunday. The spray booth is not to be used prior to 9:30 or after 4:00 p.m. No cars outside of the building, including those that are connected to clients of the business or employees. Thank you.
Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have questions concerning the license, the restrictions on your license, and I want to make certain that you're clear what they represent. So I've, this is my third term on the city council. I've had situations where small business owners have agreed to license restrictions, and in my point of view, haven't been able to make money because those restrictions are too stringent. And so they ended up breaking their license requirements, and in turn, they've lost their license. And I know that a lot of small business owners have their homes and other personal effects attached to their businesses, and so when they've lost their business license, they end up losing their homes, and we have Brockton families on the street and things like that. So I want to make sure that you understand what those restrictions are, that we have a pretty intense code enforcement team that ensures that those restrictions are adhered to. So are you certain that you can make money with the restrictions that have been discussed tonight?
I'm going to explain to him.
Okay, please.
If you could just speak into the microphone, I'd appreciate that. Just into the mic. Yes.
And you do understand that you do not have to accept these restrictions. You can go back to the city council and try to negotiate restrictions that are more favorable to your business. You understand that, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So again, you have restrictions on the hours you're operating, and also a restriction that I don't think I've heard before, where you cannot, and I think I understood this correctly, cannot park any vehicles outside of the business at any time? Is that what I heard? Port of information, Mr. President.
Prove me to you, Counselor.
That is what you heard. The building is enormous, and you can fit, what, like 40 cars inside? Is that correct? How many cars can you fit inside? I think that the, the department has that on record. You can fit a lot of cars inside. There is no parking outside. It's street, it's right out onto the street. The building goes right to the edge of the street, and there is no parking lot. It's all residential housing around it. In the real world, this business shouldn't even be in this neighborhood. But Brockton zoning is such that it's placed this commercial use that puts out a lot of particulate and pollutants into the air, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So the, the spray booth time requirements were put on, so children going to and from school won't have to deal with the added pollution. So that is why I limited it before 9:30. I wanted to put it not after 3 o'clock, but we negotiated to 4:00.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, I just want to make sure that you understand the restrictions, that you can make money at it, and we're not putting you in a situation where we're setting you up for failure instead of, instead of success. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Louis, I heard you translating, and I'm just following up with, with what Counselors, Counselor Stewart was talking, asking you those questions. You turned to your brother. Is your brother, right?
Yes, it is.
And you're translating some things to him, but somehow you stopped translating it. Can you, does it? Do you understand exactly what you're saying? Because he was in the middle of translation, and I don't think he finished the translation, so. And I, and I echo the sentiments of Counselor Stewart, because being involved in this community, I want to make sure that you guys don't come knocking on the door, you know, a month from now, saying that the city is doing some, you know, some wrongful things to you guys. So I just want to make sure that you understand that when you sign that dotted line, it's, it becomes a legal document, and you have to abide by it. Do you understand? 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 Do you understand?